Call the public hearing and regular city commission of Tuesday, June the 12th, 2018 to order. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, will you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Chrisiah?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. First item on the agenda is the public discussion items not on the agenda. Jessica?
Hi. Hi, everyone. How are y'all?
Good.
Good.
I'm Jessica Herzog. I live at One Sylvan. And I'm mainly here because I've had some recent concerns and I think Chief Noack will bring up some of those things when he talks, but just worrying a little bit about the traffic flow through the alleyways. And having now lived here for seven years, I think it is, some of it you just have to endure and some of it I feel like is getting a little bit, little bit worse. And I know it has to do with some of the construction, but I'm here because I would like to sort of explore the idea of potentially putting up slower speed limit signs on the alleyways. I was told, and I could be wrong, that unless it's posted otherwise, it is considered to be 25 miles per hour as regular city streets. That is appalling to me to think that anyone could go that fast, but I have seen it and I can't say for sure if that is that fast, but it's fast enough. So I'm requesting that we look into potential options to put up signs at, say, 15 mile per hour or any other suggestions that anyone might have. So that's why I'm here. And that's it.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Can, no, I would just ask Chief or Jim if you could clarify, is the speed limit in the alleys 25 miles per hour?
Um, I suppose, I believe so.
Default by default.
Yeah, by default. I don't know.
Is that section of the alley a road?
Yeah.
He'll be up soon, but well, sure.
Yeah, I can, do you want it during this?
You can come and then we can just segue.
Where Sergeant Reed is actually currently looking it up, I see Mr. Need went on his iPad. Scott's on his phone.
Alley speeds, alley speeds.
So Sergeant Reed is actually looking for a binder from the 70s that had traffic control orders, but in other states that we found, it is 25 miles an hour unless posted. Some states have changed it to 15 in certain instances. It's the legality of it that I think would, that we would need to address.
He's got his books.
Is because I think we received state money to help maintain alleys and things like that. I'm not sure, but I don't know if we receive anything that way.
I don't think alleys count towards our 51.
But, I mean, if we're able to do that, then yes. I know we've received calls of speeders and Jessica, and we've addressed that. The other day I was there because people were going the wrong way, but that was predicated by the fact that all their signs and everything didn't change. I mean, it's posted one way, it's do not enter, but people were still going, you know, and she lives off the alley, so she's privy to seeing it, you know, 24/7 out of her windows or when she's in her yard or anything. So we have addressed that with the construction. Hopefully that changes soon when that project is done. But we're currently...
But they still fly through regardless.
And I, you know, I've driven those alleys too, as many of you probably have or whatever. Sometimes I, people can drive it, but I don't see why it would be safe. I don't think 25 is very, is a little fast, you know?
It should be very hard at that section.
Right. So there's other sections, you know, like farther up north where it's straighter or less winding where it might appear that you could do that, but we'll, we'll look at it. And everybody's looking on their devices right now to find out exactly what button.
I think it's worth...
I don't think that we'd be opposed if we can post it into 15.
People shouldn't be going that fast.
No. No, they shouldn't.
Right. And you can't put planters everywhere.
Right.
Oh, we can. You can?
They just get moved or whatever. Okay. So with that, I'll be back.
Well, don't go too far. Are there any other items for public discussion? So we will, we will call it.
Appreciate it.
A good, a good point to be brought forward.
Is it back to governmental?
I'm just waiting to see if anybody had any issues with leaves or sewers or anything. No more items. We'll move to the governmental reports and Chief Noack. You're on.
Shouldn't have left.
Hey, I told you not to.
Hey, with that, it's come to mind that we have some speeders in the alleys, so we would like to move forward.
Good for you.
See how quickly Ron is?
You're on top of these things. Amazing. And you probably have signs being printed right now.
Signs are cheaper actually doing it right now, as we speak. No, seriously. People are looking at it. We will address that. I really didn't have a whole lot. The garden tour went well. We had no complaints of anything that day other than it rained a lot and, you know, we had some issues with the rain. Memorial Day service went well.
Very well.
It was, it was good. It was hot.
It was so hot.
It was good.
Kept the crabs down.
Right. With the change in the weather, obviously lawns, we're, we're seeing a lot more. We've been a lot more proactive with tall grass. I mean, yes, we know where they are. We're on it. Some people are having problems with their lawn service. Therefore, certain lawns are a little higher. They're trying to rectify that. We know that with the rain, sometimes you're, you know, you get ready, you're gonna go home and it rains and you can't do it and then you're busy or whatever and it gets whatever, but know that it can't be, can't have tall grass or weeds. And I think it's seven inches, eight, seven or eight. It's in there. Eight inches, I think, is the code.
Look it up.
Look that up. I'm pretty sure it's eight, but try to stay on that and then know that you can't put your trash out till the night before 6:00 PM, the night before. See, I have to keep looking at Amy to make sure I'm getting this right.
That's right.
But, because a lot of people, they go out of town, they put it out early and then we get calls that it's out for weeks or whatever at a time. So just try to stay on your grass and lawns because we'll be watching. And we've done more proactive with like recreational vehicles, trailers, boats, things like that. You can only have them at your home for certain amounts of time and things like that. If you have questions, all those rules are in the ordinance that you can get on the city website. Other than that?
Is there, is there enforcement trash cans?
Trash cans that are out early or left out.
Trash cans, period.
Not using trash cans.
Not using. Oh, yes, yes. If people are putting their trash, we get sometimes it's full. I've snuck over to my neighbors now or then after dark and put my extra bags in theirs, with their permission, of course. I don't encourage you not to do that, but if, if you do have extra, because then critters, raccoons, rodents, things like that, we don't want to encourage them tearing up the garbage and having it out.
But there are a lot of people who just put bags out. They don't use garbage cans.
Yes, not using cans at all. Your refuse should be in a approved container.
And people are being reminded of that or?
They are now.
Consider yourself reminded.
Consider yourself reminded.
Good, good. That's a problem.
That's enlightening.
I see you guys are still...
I know what the speed limit is, but I don't know what...
Right. Alleyway, we're all looking. Scott, here. My sidekick.
So it looks, it looks like if it's in a business district, local authorities may increase or decrease the prima facie speed limits within their jurisdictions. However, the speed limit outside either a business or residential district shall not be less than 25 miles per hour. So it looks like in a business district, you can lower it, but it cannot be lower than 15.
Well, it's fine.
So it continues on to say, um, a speed limit of not less than 15 miles an hour may, oh, the only way it can be established is for parks or playgrounds. So like if you have, like, you know, like in Gainesboro, if we were to open up those streets, you'd be able to make them less than that, but it looks like inside the business district, you are able to lower it. It would take a traffic control order and...
It's not a big...
Of being able to monitor the speed at that, that low a speed, I don't know how the radar guns pick up. I guess that's...
Yeah, but at least, at least if people are being told it's 15.
Right. So it looks like...
But one, one other thing that Sergeant Reed on this, it's 25 miles an hour if it's paved or gravelled also. So unless it's like dirt, like we used to have a lawn or dirt, so it's 25 miles an hour. So I believe it would, if you wanted to, take a traffic control order to change that. So, which we could work on if you so give us a direction.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Questions?
Oh, and one other thing, in the midst of all the construction, I see you're still monitoring the stop sign on Woodward Heights.
We do that daily. We have a few residents...
Sneaking in behind all the equipment and everything else.
We have a few residents that we could be there 24/7. That's not enough. And, you know, it's as soon as we leave to go handle some other business or something that somebody runs it and that's what they see because then we're not there. But we write numerous violations there.
Yeah, I've seen you. That's great. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. No other governmental reports? Moving on to city commission liaison reports, starting with Commissioner Chrisiah, Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, Mayor. At the May Ferndale School Board meeting, there was quite the agenda. It kicked off with Jayla Pierce. She's a university high school graduate. She has acted as the liaison for this year to attend school board meetings and then report back to her student body. And she thanked everybody for a great experience and she will be attending MSU in the fall. After her report, there was the superintendent's excellence award and this month's, the May award went to Amar Yunus, who is a fourth grader at Fuel. And he had several teachers in attendance who just lauded him for being a class leader and always wanting to lend a hand to his clean, to his classmates, and he distinguished himself with his quiet leadership. So Amar's family was there and they were very proud of him, as were his teachers. After the excellence award, there was the eagle of the month award. This went to Liz Gillespie at University High School. And the eagle of the month award goes to the member of either the teacher body or support staff at the, in the district. Liz Gillespie was called out for her leadership in creating the university high school food bank. This was incredibly touching to hear about the efforts that she goes to, to make sure families have food in the district. So she organizes food banks and, and locates families in need and ensures that families in the district don't go hungry, recognizing how difficult it is to learn on, when you're famished. So she was rewarded for that and, and her leadership there. After that, they talked about building pride. At Ferndale Middle School, they're, they're instituting or working on this project, they have been working on this project called Six Principles to Create a Culture of Thinking. This was a great initiative. They spent a lot of time talking about how they're implementing this at Ferndale Middle School and the UHS. Talking about creating a culture of learning and a question, and a culture of thinking, making thinking visible, getting information out of the head and, and to get it to a point where you can communicate to your classmates and your teachers. It's a very important program and they're gonna, they're gonna make this district wide coming up in future years. But they, they gave a review of the, the first year at FMS and UHS working on creating a culture of thinking. After that, we had public comments and our own, Ted Zachary was there. If you remember, last month, he brought his reclaimed windmills to share with us. And it was suggested that maybe he could present to the school board. He did that. His wife Judy was there to assist him and he did a great job impressing to the Ferndale School Board the importance of reducing our landfill. And afterwards, he was actually able to connect with one of the, the teachers there and there's discussions of bringing something along the lines of that initiative into the schoolroom next year. So Ted should be applauded for taking the initiative there and introducing that topic at the May meeting. After that, the teachers' union president announced the award, the awards of FEA scholarships, $500 each for graduating seniors. The Chamber of Kimberly from the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce invited area students who may be looking for opportunities over the summer to contact the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce for journalism and business internship opportunities. She was very excited about connecting with the student body there. There was a overall congratulations of the student body who would be graduating. UHS had 100% of their seniors graduate and TCEC had its largest graduating class ever with 107. And Ferndale High School graduates earned more than $2 million in scholarships. To point out just one, Ferndale High School senior Max Weber received the prestigious Lloyd and Lori Carr scholarship from the University of Michigan. The Lloyd and Lori Carr scholarship is a $3,500 award to outstanding freshman applicant to the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor and named in honor of Mr. and Mrs. Carr, who, if you remember, served as a Michigan football coach for over 28 years. So it's, it's a very prestigious award going to FHS senior Max Weber. The Ferndale Middle School baseball team was undefeated, 10-0. There's a lot of pride there. And congratulations to Fuel teacher Heather Williams. She was honored with the Regional Collaboration Network Leadership Award. The RCN is a network of autism spectrum disorder teachers in Oakland County who meet monthly. Leadership award is for advances Fuel has made in the Positively Awesome Leaders Program. PAL is an after-school and in-school program that teaches inclusive practices. This award is housed at Ferndale for a year and then returned to Oakland schools. Ferndale joins Troy, Claussen and Holly Schools as the only four districts that have received this award in Oakland County. So we're very proud of that here in our community. And this is a point of the meetings that I always appreciate. There's a point of pride and, and the school board members go around, including the superintendent, and just point out things that they recognize as important in the district and they're always good. But Jim O'Donnell took a moment to call out the student leadership of the Progressive Youth Association, who have been leaders on the issue of gun violence in schools. He, he talked about how they have organized rallies and trips to Lansing and calls to the representatives to force our political leaders to, to, to take this issue more seriously. So that was a very touching moment at the end of the meeting and one of many points of pride that were talked about that night. So, and with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. I also wanted to recognize the fact that Superintendent Bazi and two of the, two of the board attended our Memorial Day ceremony, which was very nice. I really appreciate that. So just want to recognize that. Thank you.
Can I say something real quick, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Max, Max Weber is one of our lifeguards at the pool.
All right.
And Jacob Keener, who we talked about last month, also one of our lifeguards scored a perfect score on his ACT and a perfect score on his SAT.
Wow.
Both are, uh, are, I know, it's wild.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, it's good to know that he'll be looking over us this summer.
Hope he scans the pool or not. That's all I'm asking. How do you follow that? Commissioner Perry, your DDA?
My scores were not quite that good.
Yeah, the planning commission DDA has, did not meet in the month of June, but they will be meeting on July 23rd at, which is Monday, July 23rd at 7:00 PM right here at City Hall. So join us.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott, historical commission.
Also a quick one. We, we did have a meeting this week. Unfortunately, I don't have the results of the home and garden tour to share, other than to say it's very successful. All of the homes that participated were just really beautifully done. They all had something different to share with the community, walk through them and get ideas of your own. And I would encourage anyone to participate, although I know I'll get some, at least one person asking me to participate, so maybe I'll do that next year. But it was a really, really good experience for everybody that participated and thanks to, on behalf of the historical commission, thanks to everyone that did participate. And our next meeting will be in September. We take the, the summer off. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wall, recreation commission.
We did not have a meeting either, but we have one coming up June 27th at 7:00 PM right here. We had a record-breaking Memorial Day pool situation. Anybody who was there could probably attest to it. So listen to the numbers, 1,700 patrons from Monday through Fri- or excuse me, Friday through Monday, 300 more than any previous weekend ever. So it was hot, right?
I can believe it. It was hot.
It's average of 60 patrons per hour.
And the weather has plummeted since then, so.
Yes, it has. It's very nice. So ready for this? Full summer mode starting Monday, June 18th at the community center. First day of outdoor swim practice, 40, 145 swimmers, cute as can be. Should just stop by even if you're not part of it. It's adorable. First day of early bird swim, 6:00 AM. First day of swim lessons, first day of summer program camp, 120 kids registered. Yep, such an awesome program. First day of full pool hour, zero depth, 11 to 12:45 and the rest of it, 1 to 8. And we are, the recreation committee is in the process of updating the recreation master plan. We're asking people to get involved, go on the city website, www.citypleasureridge.org. The link is at the top. Fill it out. It's, you know, it's how everything gets done in the city as far as like this, how Gainesboro Park, you know, how we help mold things. So it's really important to take the time, even though, you know, I know everybody's busy, but we'd be very grateful if you would do that. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for anyone? All right. Thanks very much. Next item is consideration of the father consent agenda. I'm not going to read anything, but I do want to point out that we have a resolution recognizing June as Gay Pride Month and a proclamation recognizing June as Immigrant, Immigrant Heritage Month. So I will ask if we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any, any discussion? All right. Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Chrisiah?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, the motion is approved. Next item is public hearing, solicitation of public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2018, 2019 combined city budget and the 2018-19 millage rates. Jim, would you like to give us a little...
Yes.
Friends?
I have the presentation from last month and I'd be happy to go through again if you'd like, but otherwise, the budget is essentially unchanged from the presentation in May. We'll be called for the public hearing. The city millage rate will be decreasing slightly from 21.5677 mils to 21.4388 mils this year compared to last year. Other than that, the broad financial status of the city is stable and improving. The police pension millage is beginning this year. We are increasing our contributions to the currently underfunded pension system and we'll also be completing a number of capital improvement projects around the city, large and small. So expect lots of good things in the coming year.
Great idea. I just, I was just looking to see if you had any new charts or graphs.
No, we're new.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Are there any questions for Jim before I open the public hearing? All right. Open the public hearing. For some reason, I didn't expect anybody to come running. Okay. No comments? Close the public hearing. All right, then we'll move to see if there's a motion to approve the combined city budget and 2018-2019 millage rates.
Mayor, I move the 2018-2019 combined city budgets to be approved and that the budget resolution be adopted, including the levying of 13.0307 mils for the general fund operating, 2.7232 mils for infrastructure improvements, 1.5551 mils for solid waste and disposal, 0.32 mils for publicity, 0.3675 mils for library services, 1.1546 mils for the community center complex operations, 1.2500 mils for park improvement and 0.3500 mils for police pension stabilization. Be approved as recommended.
Suck it.
Is there any discussion? All right. Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Chrisiah?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Commissioner Perry, the budget is approved. That wasn't bad. Next item on the agenda, the 2018 to 2022 police patrol contract.
Yes. The current police contract was a five-year contract that expires on June 30 of this year. So accordingly, we've been working with the police officers union to develop a new contract. The one we've negotiated would be for four years and would begin on July 1, 2018 and then run through July, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2022. As the city commission is aware and as some residents may be aware, we have made some amendments to the current police contract around health care and retirement benefits. Those were done before we requested the police pension millage last November and those were done to help reduce the city's exposure to long-term unfunded liabilities. Those were the hard, those were the hard issues to deal with. Those having been negotiated successfully with the police officers previously, this current negotiation around the contract before you was essentially a status quo contract. A few items were cleaned up. We did benchmark police wages with surrounding comparable nearby departments and we adjusted their wages upwards slightly based on that. So we are now at market rate for what officers in other communities are making. And there was a, a few changes to some time off provisions in the ordinance, but nothing that I think rises to the level of above the full news on the newspaper. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have about the contract, but again, this is largely a status quo exercise.
Are there any questions, comments for Jim?
No, I just wanted, if I could, Mayor?
Please.
Just a clarification, this is something we talked about earlier. This contract covers four current employees. That's the scope of this agreement. Our chief and Sergeant Reed are covered as at-will employees and we have two employ- currently we have two part-times. So I just wanted residents to understand the scope of this agreement is not all encompassing when it comes to how we compensate our police officers, that this is strictly for the four officers identified under this agreement. But one of the things, I know we talked about this, we had a discussion in the workshop that, although not stated in the policy, there's, uh, there is an understanding at the department level that, especially in, in cases of need, specifically if, you know, there would be a, a shooting, it's a, on duty, there, it is called out in, in the, in the agreement that there are steps that are taken naturally to ensure that the officer is given the attention that they need in that situation as far as speaking to somebody about the incident. My concern was that learning that... My concern was that learning that now our officers were covered under this agreement, that I would never want this to happen and hopefully it never happens, but that those services are something that an officer affected, although not called out here, would be, those would be available for.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So the provisions that are in the contract are the contractual provisions, and we did make a few updates to those. The department also has its own internal policies which mirror those. So the contract does cover the four patrol officers, but the departmental policies cover all officers. So of course, in situations like that, we would make, you know, every resource available to the officer and question, should it happen, be him or her part-time or full-time.
Okay. That was just something that I thought was important and, you know, I appreciate the policy as far as, you know, looking out for those covered under this agreement and those not covered under the agreement. Like you mentioned in your introduction, a lot of the heavy lifting on this was actually done eighteen months ago when the adjustments in the pension, the healthcare were discussed. And at that time, it was brought before this board, and it was something at that time that I couldn't support based on the adjustments to the retirement package specifically moving from a defined benefit pension to this hybrid, which contextually, in the, in the profession, is gaining, I guess, I won't say popularity, but usefulness as municipalities trying to get a handle on their post-employment liabilities. At the ti- at the time when we voted on this before, I was of the belief that the defined benefit was something that we, as a community, we still could afford and something that we, we owed our officers. It was a feeling I had then, it's a feeling I still have, and, you know, that is the reason I'll be voting no tonight because of the inclusion of that provision, which, you know, is, you know, something that I just fundamentally don't agree with. I appreciate the, the effort on Jim's half on behalf of the residents, and I appreciate, you know, getting through the negotiations here. But because of that reason, I'll, I'll not be supporting this agreement tonight.
Any other comments? Okay, well then I will ask if there's a motion to approve the Police Patrol Contract.
Go ahead. Your Honor, I move the agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council representing the Pleasant Ridge Police Patrol Officers Union dated July 1, 2018 through June 30th, 2022 be approved, and at the mayor, and that, excuse me, and at the mayor, the city clerk, city manager, and city attorney be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there support?
I second that.
Any further discussion?
I have one quick question. Now, Jim, was this something that the officers approved of?
Yes, they have voted to approve, to ratify this agreement already.
And they were all on board with this, you think?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Chrisia?
No.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, City Managers' Report.
Thank you. You may have noticed we have some infrastructure projects going on around town. So just a couple of updates around those. Indiana and Bermuda are progressing. We've done a lot of, well, not we, the contractor has done a lot of the sidewalk and concrete work. The Sylvan-Indiana intersection should be open soon. I don't have a date yet, but soon. And then they'll start working on the asphalt over there. Over on this side of town, we will be closing down the ridge in Millington intersection at the beginning of the Ridge Road construction project. That was scheduled to happen a week ago. We sent out notices to residents, and then a day later, the contractor told us, said, "No, no, no, we changed our schedule." So I love construction projects. Now, the contractor will be closing down and doing the cement work at Millington when they're doing the rest of the cement work on ridge. So ridge will be open the whole time that Millington is being, is being shut down. And then once Millington is done and reopened, then they will shut down the rest of ridge. Because we know that Millington is an important way for Eastside residents in particular to get to the community center during the Ridge Road construction project. Because the detour, when ridge is closed and you can't get across ridge, the detour is going to be going down to Lewiston and Farnale, and then back up Forest up to Maplefield if you live west of ridge. Farnale is on the same schedule we are. Once school lets out, they're going to be reconstructing Drayton from Pinecrest Ridge to their city limit. So Drayton will be under construction at the same time that Ridge is. So that's why our detour is now going all the way down to Lewiston and back out.
We were talking about Millington. The sign, the no-turn between four and seven sign will be bagged when that Millington intersection goes because it's a little bit for residents to get down there anyway. So we had some questions about it.
Residents don't need to stress, we're not going to ticket you for just trying to get your house.
Residents only.
Residents only.
And it will be posted, you know, road closed at Woodward to hopefully stop everyone else from turning down the road. We had that issue with Sylvan, it doesn't matter what you do, people still think that it doesn't apply to them.
It's amazing, what a road close sign.
Yeah, I don't know if they think it reduces hazard it right over the intersection or something like it's.
I don't know, but they're still turning around and turning around and turning around.
Some things are immutable laws of the universe.
But it is peaceful there over there. It's very peaceful.
Yeah. I had something else and it's gone now. It's been nice knowing Scott, but when next Monday hits and all those things that Amanda was talking about at the community center, we won't see him for a while here, so everyone say goodbye to Scott for a while.
It's the last smile you're gonna see on his face for a long time.
Hey, we made it to Memorial Day weekend, so.
There you go, I know, if you can do that, you can do anything.
What's your shirt, Scott?
It's Red Rescue.
For our managers, the lifeguards we get at the polls, it's sent to you for Red Rescue.
So cute.
Very nice. Very good, cool. Anybody have questions for Jim?
Can I just ask, and this is, I guess, something that's constantly brought up, and this, I guess, could be the yearly review, but the pooling of the water in the streets. I know we talked earlier in the month about the, and everyone knows about, everyone should know by now about the flow restrictions on, the flow restrictions on the sewer grates and the combined sewers and all, and all the reasons we have the, the flow restrictions on there. Also, the abundance of trees, the abundance of droppings, especially in springtime, that contribute to a backup that creates some street flooding. I know part of the city's response to that is a street sweeping, and it's something that we've done in the past, we're doing this year. Can you kind of talk about your strategy with the street sweeping? As far as what we can do, what we can't do, as far as the limitations of having, you know, on-street parking, half the street, on many of these streets, you know, unless there's a time of the day where, you know, people are at work or things like that, where you can't even get a full sweep of the street. Is there, what do you, what do, what's kind of your vision or your strategy for addressing that?
Have you ever, have you ever had a contractor do a project at your house?
Yeah.
And they inexplicably disappear for a week and a half? So that's what we deal with, with our street sweeping, because we, we don't have our own street sweeper, we don't have, you know, we just, we don't. So we contract that service out. Briarlar have been doing that for us in the past, they got out of the street sweeping game. So now through Briarlar, they have found a new contractor. And quite frankly, the, the actual quality of the street sweeping has improved this year. But the schedule that we set is not always the schedule they show up on.
Okay.
So for instance, it's, it's supposed to be the second, we're trying it to get it to the second Monday of every month to consistently get street sweeping. However, the weather, equipment failures, other jobs, the contractor didn't get to us yesterday. They were here today, so our streets were swept today.
Okay.
So yes, I would love to say no parking on the second Monday of every month, or, you know, to put, post signs out that say no parking, street sweeping tomorrow. But then when they don't show up on that schedule exactly, those signs are kind of worthless.
People get annoyed.
Right.
Right.
So that, that is truly the struggle. I would love to say no parking second Monday of every month, and also the fourth Monday of May, because we know in the springtime we get more stuff dropping from the trees. But, you know, as a practical matter, we haven't, I haven't seen a consistent and reliable enough schedule on the contractor's part to go to our level of communicating that out to the residents.
Okay.
Because, you know, I'd rather not do something than do something badly or, you know, do say that and then not deliver on that schedule. Because it becomes meaningless. So we continue to try with the contractor place. They just started a month and a half ago with us. Hopefully, we can get them where it's a reliable, regular schedule. We talked to Briarlar about getting two street sweepings, you know, every two weeks in the springtime. But of course, the street sweepers are busy because everywhere is dirty at that time of year. So, you know, these aren't excuses, it's just, you know, yes, we're aware of the issues. And, you know, I would love to get there someday and we'll continue to work towards getting there. But in the meantime, check out the streets right now. If there wasn't a parked car.
Somebody was parked in front of my house.
Right.
Was it you?
But I had swept it before, so. So, yes, that's, that's a good question. Because that does contribute, I, you know, and our Tim, the DPW coordinator, when he, you know, he's out there pulling all the tree crud off the drains every time it rains, so.
God bless him.
God bless him indeed, we do know about it.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Good.
I have a quick one.
Yeah.
To our city manager, for those of us that got new trees, how often should we be putting buckets of water?
Right, so in, in times of cool weather, or if it's just raining, as long as the, the soil is moist, you don't need the water. Because too much supplemental watering is actually worse. It's when we get those periods of extended heat and, you know, drought. So like last summer was really tough on the trees that we planted because we had almost no rain and it was really hot. So the, the easiest thing to do is just go stick your finger in the soil. If it feels moist, it's fine, you don't need the water. But as a rule of thumb, if you get one of those gator bags, you really only need to fill it up once every week. If it's ninety-five and not raining at all, you can do it twice a week.
Thank you.
One more tree question. And let me preface it by the fact that I don't believe in city government by Facebook. So I would appreciate people actually coming forth instead of putting all the comments on Facebook. But I did want to ask a question on mulching around trees. The issue around mulching to the trunk versus the donut.
Oh, right.
Or as they say, the donut versus the volcano.
So the good thing is, I know that we have high mounds here. However, in most cases, and I haven't gone out and inspected every single tree on city property, but in most cases, the ones I have gone and looked at, we don't have volcano mulching because it doesn't go up the trunk. Typically, there is the, the dip around the trunk itself. You know, that said, they have built up over time. And we have had our arborist, who is separate from Briarlar, we actually had him out, we had him look at the, at the rings around the trees. And he said, "Oh yeah, I was expecting much, much worse than what we have" when we called him and said, "We want you to look at these and tell us." That said, the trees that are, I guess, between the main walk from Woodward to City Hall out to the street here, if you look at those, we did bring Briarlar in, we did show them what we wanted. Tim went and after we had met with, with Josh, had rearranged some of the mulch. So next year, when they do their mulching, they're going to go and basically, what's happened is over time, it's just built up. They're going to pull that all back and get it down, so next year.
More donut versus volcano?
Well, neither really, because we have donut now, we don't really even have volcano now. So, and I know some people disagree with me on that, but.
Let them come forth.
Right. But yeah, it'll be no vol- it'll be no donut next year.
Okay.
Should be just a nice, flat, smooth.
Nice.
Lovely.
There you, good, good. Thank you, thank you for that.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Let's move on to other business. And we got books, anything, okay, let's do books, that's more exciting.
You sure?
Yeah, yeah, I like books.
Alright, we'll do books. This is tomorrow at the community center at seven o'clock. The Ridge Readers will be discussing Michael Zudorin's The Leisure Seeker, a novel. Now, this has been highly acclaimed, and as an author, he has made quite the name for himself. I know Commissioner Perry and Commissioner, or excuse me, Mayor Metzger are familiar with his works and recommended.
Yes.
Local boy, lives in Middletown?
He is, he's a good man.
Yeah.
Good guy, yeah, very good, they're good books.
Yeah, so we're really, we're really excited to be reading this one this summer.
His new one is really good.
Yeah. So this is tomorrow, if you're familiar with his writings or familiar with this book in particular, you can join us tomorrow at the community center at seven o'clock. And I have one more item, I wanted to just announce, this is a rally that's being held on Thursday, and this is being hosted by the African Bureau of Immigration and Social Affairs, Metro Detroit Political Action Network, and the Women's March Michigan. This will be the March for Stolen Children. And this was in response to, to some of the disturbing sights of children, of immigrants trying to enter the country who are being detained, separated from their families. A lot of people see some of these images and are very disturbed and want to raise voice in, in opposition. This is an opportunity to do that, a peaceful opportunity. Thursday, June 14th, from five to seven, at Jefferson and Mount Elliott in Detroit. This is across from the ICE detention center in Detroit. There's a Walgreens and a Marathon gas station on the south side of it. And the organizers want everyone to bring signs, bring your enthusiasm, bring your outrage. But they want to, they want this to be a peaceful event. So purpose is to oppose the cruel, inhumane, and unjustified separation of children from their parents along the US border with Mexico and at other points of entry into the US. The protesters are objecting to the conditions under which these children are kept, and the protesters are objecting to the irreversible trauma that has been perpetrated on these children and their parents simply for the crying of seeking a better life. To separate immigrant families, victims of violence, hunger and poverty is to re-violate them. Children as young as eighteen months have been torn from their mother's arms. This is violent abuse, and this is an opportunity, if you feel along these lines, this is an opportunity for you to join in opposition. So again, this is Thursday, June 14th, five to seven, at Jefferson and Mount Elliott.
Thank you for that. Are there any other comments?
I have.
Yes?
I pulled up the Historical Commission packet to look at what I had given them at their meeting for the preliminary numbers for the Home and Garden Tour. So I don't have all the expenses in yet, but it looks like they made a little over forty-five hundred.
That's great.
And they had about three hundred tickets sold.
Well, good.
Nice. Good, good.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, nothing else?
Uh-uh.
Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. We are adjourned.